Hi Bill.
Hello there.
So I'm gonna try to go live on Facebook right now, I think.
Oh, cool. Can I, now how would I, I would check it up on the Towns Facebook page?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do it now and um for all those watching this recording right now, we're trying something new.
All right, here, I'll go on and see if it works, sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to set it up right now, so.
Far out. Well, tell me when, tell me when to fire it up. Hey Jim.
Hey Bill, how you doing?
We got you fired up on the, virtually fired up.
Don't, don't, don't pressure luck.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Well, again, the meeting ain't finished yet.
It's something else though, huh? It really is.
I guess so.
I love Bill's, look at Bill's, can you see Bill's?
No.
Desktop. Oh, I like the beard.
You do, huh?
Haven't seen you in a while.
Well, I, I started the day we went on the lockdown and the day the lockdown comes off, so does it.
That's what I did, see? But, I did that too, but it was like I don't know, it seemed like it seemed to do, but I love The Shining up there with Bill's, Bill Crenshaw's. So you got my email catching you up on some of the stuff there?
Yes, well, I've got all the stuff you sent me up to a minute or two ago.
Good, good. Alright, so, we're gonna try to stream this live tonight too. Megan's trying to send it out live.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna go see, I'm gonna watch it on here and see if it's How you doing, Bill?
Going well. How do we access the stream?
What's that?
What's she streaming on?
Facebook.
Oh.
On the, on the Town page on Facebook? I'm gonna, I'm going on to see if we can do it, or if I can see it. I don't quite understand that. What, because what the goal I thought would be, would be if we, why can't we send the feeds from Zoom right to the TV, our TV channel? But they're working on that, so I'm sure we'll get it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, that seems easier.
Let's see, uh-oh, uh-oh, what'd I do here? Alright, see Town and Manor. Hi Paul.
Hey Bill.
How you doing?
Good, how you doing?
Pretty good. We're trying to see if we're gonna stream, this is supposed to be streamed live tonight. So, I'm watching it, we'll see.
Hey guys.
Hey Mike.
Hi Mike.
Jim, you're on the Zoom.
Yeah. After all this time, I finally got him.
Nice. You like Bill's screenshot there?
I do, and it looks so much like him.
Yeah. Nice teeth.
Yes.
They go to the dentist today. It worked out fine, apparently.
Yeah, that's right. Hey Mike.
Yeah, sorry, I just muted, what's up?
How would I, Megan's trying to stream this live on Facebook?
Are you asking if I have experience?
Yeah, no, I was saying, how, I've seen, how do you find it if it's streaming, but?
I'm not sure, I'm actually not on Facebook.
Okay.
It's not, it's not streaming yet, I'm still working on it.
Okay, thanks.
Either way, Bill, there's a lot of documents for today.
Yeah.
So either Greg or you should be very, very specific about the file name you want me to be displaying on screen.
Let's see, we got alright. Um, well, Mike, I, are you on board docs now? Yes, I think what I'll do, I'll pull it up on my other computer and then I can kinda tell you what the name would be if it's
Yeah, that would be great.
If I can.
I have it all up and I have most, most everything downloaded as a backup, but they're
Hey Greg.
Hey guys.
Hey Greg.
We got Jim on, Jim on now, look.
Jim?
Hi there, guys.
Good to see ya.
It's good to be seeing you, I respect.
Let's see, Board Docs. Hey Greg, what we're gonna try to do, I was just talking to Mike, we're gonna get because we've got a lot of documents up there, so we'll try to we'll try to coordinate what goes up on the screen, what you want. And so, I think I can do this. Oh, hey Mike.
Yes.
So, the way we put these in, if you look at with the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, you know?
Yes.
Um, that's where we try to you know, give the main categories and then the sub the sub ones are off of it, so I'll try to you know, depending on what we're talking about, I'll try to get you to the right one.
Yeah, just, yeah, just say something like point E, architecture, promenade, tree planting detail, and you know, that'll be
Hi Katie. Where are you at, look at, what's Bill got now, what is that, the Veterans Memorial? No.
Karen.
Huh?
It's almost Memorial Day.
Almost. Greg, Paul's on already from 86A. What about 86A? No, I said Paul's on, he's from 86A.
He's on the call, okay, hey Paul, how you doing?
And we've got the McDonald's, I see, we've got Katie, let's see if we can reveal us. And, yeah, 10. It's so quiet.
I want Jim to lower his camera so we can see his beard.
How about that, huh?
There you go, see?
I, I can't catch up with you, Bill, I'm trying.
Give it some time.
Maybe if I get a little older.
Oh, and there's Jeff, Jeff, hey Jeff.
Good evening, everybody.
Well, all our guys who are on there, all the, all the planning board or public or whoever on Board Docs, I, I, we arranged it a little differently. So when we get to a project like 115, there's sub headings there, you'll see that are the basic category and then if you go to them, they branch off because there's a lot of documents, so that's kind of the way, easiest way to navigate it. So if we're talking about, you know, specific things, we'd probably go to the subheading and I'll try to get Mike, I'll try to direct him to the right place, but actually Katie, Katie's probably quicker than I am, but
I can try.
I, I need the glasses.
So, Bill, can you please allow me to share my screen? Right now, it says the host has disabled screen sharing, so either make me a co-host or grant.
Oh, oh, I think, I think Megan.
That would be me, this is Megan, um, I can try to figure out how to do that.
Hi Megan.
Hi.
Michael, wow.
I'm in a helicopter too.
Nice quiet one. I can see the rotor behind Jim.
Yeah, everybody.
You have the option now, do you?
Hey Chris, hey Arman, Paul.
Hey, how you doing, guys?
Cool.
Oh, it worked, Mike. All set, thanks Megan.
Yep.
Okay.
Guys, I'm trying to, I'm trying to livestream on Facebook and I'm, I'm coming into a couple hurdles that were not there when I tested it earlier, so if I do make it happen, I'll let you all know, um, we are making every attempt to make this as public as possible. But, there's a steep learning curve here.
Thank you Megan. Guys, I think we are still waiting on Andy. Can send him a text real quick.
Let's see, we have
if he's gonna be coming just a few minutes late, then I think we should just get started and take care of some early business.
Yeah. Can you, um
I just sent him a text, we'll see if he
Well, we've got
We can wait two more minutes.
Yeah, I mean, we could do minutes, should we do minutes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let people know if he's, if he gets back to me, I think we should just open and get, get on the things here. Right, good evening, everybody, welcome to this meeting of the Town and Manor Planning Board. It's 7:02 PM on Tuesday, May 26th. And we've got a full board minus Andrew Dimore, who hopefully will be joining us. Mike Utley, the alternate is, is here. So, let's see here, I guess the first thing is just to talk about our order, we're gonna rearrange things a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, may pint of water, please?
Yes, please Jim.
Alright, I'd like to go on the record that I'm opposed to this board holding any public hearings in this format. I believe that it is in the best interest for the public, the board, and the applicant that they be physically present in order to fully participate in an orderly discussion. in an orderly discussion of the material and plan, and I cite the Fifth Amendment, the rights of persons, due process of law, please note that.
Thanks, Jim, I noted, and I'm glad that you had a chance to speak to that, I, I was gonna touch on this issue generally, we'll speak to it right now, I guess, so what Jim is referring to is that we are proceeding to hear, you know, to, to move forward with public hearings. We had been on pause for, you know, six weeks or so, at our own discretion, during the, the coronavirus pandemic situation that we're all way too aware of. However, we, after consulting, you know, ourselves amongst ourselves, decided with reservation, as noted by Jim, that, um, you know, we decided that we would resume public hearings via the Zoom meeting digital platform, and, um, you know, I guess I'll just generally say to the public that it was carefully considered, that it was reviewed with town council, who told us that we do have the legal authority to proceed, despite maybe some disagreements, but as far as official advice to, to the town, we, we felt comfortable with that from a legal point of view. And I did also just want to mention that there were four very specific conditions that we set in place after hearing feedback from others on the planning board, that need to be enacted essentially for us to go ahead with each individual hearing. So the first is that all the applicants must consent to this format in writing. And, you know, I probably will ask folks tonight, just to get that on the record, but my understanding is that all the hearings before us have been cleared in writing. Second is that we will appoint a digital moderator to make sure that appropriate documents are shown on the screen during the hearing. Thank you to Mike Utley for volunteering for that, Mike is gonna be driving the screen share tonight, and we'll be, you know, following the dialogue and pulling up the appropriate documents. Number three is that all the documents for any public hearing will be available to the public at least one week before the hearing. That's via the board docs platform, which I think there are links to in the agenda, and that the number, the, the fourth condition is that physical copies of the hearing materials will be available to board members at their request. So the board members themselves, i- if they've requested it, have received printed copies of any hearing materials in advance of the meeting. So my understanding is all four of those conditions have been met for all the hearings that we have before us tonight, and so I just wanted to kind of let everyone, everyone out there know of our process in arriving at both the closure and then now at the sort of reopening of the public hearing process and, and the, the sort of backstory behind, you know, making sure that this, we, that, at least in my opinion, that we're, we're good to go in this format. With that said, speaking now to the rearrangement of the agenda for tonight, the first thing that we can do while we, has Andy joined us by any chance in the interim, or no? I have not received a text back, so anyways, we're gonna start with, uh, let's see, item one. We're gonna defer item two till later, we'll go right to item three. Then, item, uh, let's see, the five, number five, and number six, and then the, the most, you know, substantive hearing we have tonight is item four, the public hearing for 115 main, that'll be after we clear the deck, so to speak, you know, allow some people to, uh, to call it a night, so. With that said, uh, we'll, we'll move right to the item one approval of minutes. And I'm gonna get myself to, or docs.
I didn't see any minutes in board docs.
Yeah, they should, they're up there.
They should write. Hey. I see them in the email from, um, Bill.
Yeah, they're up there too on board docs now, I don't know if they're, they.
Maybe we refresh.
Yeah.
So yeah, I refreshed my browser and got Bill Memzer, it's 310 and 324.
Correct.
Well, I, I've reviewed, I have no comments, I'll entertain a motion once others are ready.
I reviewed, I have no comments.
I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Second. That's Jim with the motion, myself with the second, this is for both March 10th and March 24th. All in favor by voice vote of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And it's approved, thank you, everyone. Excuse me, guys. Break. Um, okay, sorry, guys, um, so minutes are all set, let's go to, uh, item three, public hearing for 86A powder mill. Once again, this is a, I'm gonna have to change venues, guys, sorry. Okay, so Bill, we are continuing this hearing from, uh, can you catch us up?
Did it hear it? Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, the, the hearing was continued from, uh, May 19th. It's been, uh, it was continued back from, I believe, February, the, uh, there was two issues that were unresolved. The first was that there was a question of ownership, uh, and of the, the mall itself and, uh, an agreement between one of the 86A, which is the subject.
Subject.
Right, and the, um, the subject property, I don't know if that's been worked out, so maybe Paul can catch us up on that, the second was that we have not yet received revised plans to review. So, um, basically that's where we were, I did relate to the applicant that the board was, uh, a little, felt they've given enough time and they wanted an update, but I thought that, um, if we had, uh, Mr. Karshner in it, perhaps he could explain things and give us an update and then the board could make an informed decision and see what they wish to do.
Thanks, Bill, so with that, uh, if, uh, let's see, is it Paul?
Yep.
Hello, Paul, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Great, if you wanna just catch us up, give us your updates and, uh, I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, so pretty short and simple, um, first of all, we have on our end revised the site plan, um, of course, we have not submitted it yet, but, um, the revision is fairly substantial and it was based off of the comments made by, um, Wayne and VHB, um, and some other input from the applicant. As far as the current easement in that situation with the owners of the mall, uh, the applicant has been working with them to uh, come to an agreement on how that will be handled, it's a little bit muddy as I think, um, Bill, Caitlin, and I discovered, you know, when we first kind of had contact, um, with the owners of Victory Plaza, but we are in the process of working it out. It looks like it's going to get worked out, but, um, as we were advised not to appear before you until we had actually worked that, uh, issue out, we haven't submitted the revised plan yet, so it looks like we're close to a point where, uh, we're gonna be on the same page with the owners of Victory Plaza. Once we have reached an agreement, um, with them, we will submit the revised plan in order to avoid any sort of issue at a public hearing, because, I mean, really what we were trying to avoid, and this was, um, sort of, uh, the advice of Bill, um, was, we don't wanna be arguing about stuff that could easily be solved. A butter to a butter, we don't wanna be arguing about that in a public forum, um, because it's not really fair to take up your time like that, so once we have resolved that issue, we will submit the revised plan, um, and it looks like that should occur fairly soon, the hour, the applicant and his attorney knows that this is, um, pressing, so they've been working hard to get this done. So I can answer any other questions you have, but that is really, um, all I can say at this time. As for the issue.
Thank you, I, I mean, I'll, I'll let others chime in in a sec, but my sense of the concern, I guess, on our end is that, you know, really, the, we're reticent to allow any more continuances without some certainty that there'll be an actual substantive presentation at the next, you know, on that date, for the reason that, you know, when, when hearings are noted, um, noticed and advertised, then butters and, and the general public show up and prepare themselves to participate as they should, uh, but, you know, when, when, it's just not fair mainly to those folks that are, you know, concerned about the project and their venue is to, um, you know, come to these meetings and give their feedback, so I think that was, um, ma- maybe I'll, I'll let others on the board if there's other, you know, sensitivity or concern that you wanna share at this point regarding continuing this hearing anymore.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add one thing before you talk to the board? Um, I did speak to the, uh, other, uh, the butters, and they expressed confidence they were gonna have this worked out. But they, I didn't have a date that it was gonna be done, but they did.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Jim.
I voiced my feelings about this the last time we, uh, that they asked for a continuance, and here we go again, asking for another continuous. I, by my reckoning, this is at least four of them that we've done, and they seem to be still kind of wishy-washy about getting the stuff resolved that the applicant, Leo, said he could get resolved that very first time, so I would move tonight that we deny the application and, without prejudice, and allow them, when they get all their ducks in the, in a row in there, everything all set, let them come back in and let's do the thing correctly.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank, thank you.
Bill, I mean, maybe what's, what's the downside of that scenario?
Well, the downside is, uh, that it would really start the process over again for the applicant and the town, only, and that, uh, we would have to, uh, be re-advertized, re-noticed, and so on. It, it, I, I, you know, it, that's pretty much it, it's, um, but it is, it is a.
What about fees?
Yes.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I did make a motion.
Oh. That was your, I'm sorry, I missed the motion, Jim, so, um, would you mind repeating for everyone?
Yes, I move that the, uh, application be denied without prejudice tonight and allowed to come back in and be re-advertized when they get all their ducks in a row and are ready to go forth.
Thank you, sorry, sorry, I missed that, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
That's Chris, thank you.
Yeah. Can we, can we get back to your question about, um, back to Bill about what the repercussions are?
Sure.
Thanks.
Bill, were you in the mid, middle, you have any, anything more to add to that?
I don't, it, it's, it's just a question of, you know, the process starts again and, um, getting, getting something at that site, which is, you know, something that, uh, we wanted to get going, would be, uh, delayed while we re-advertise, and there's a certain, um, statutory, uh, advertising period.
What, what about fees? Is there an issue with fees, or could they roll those forward, or I don't know how it's typically done?
No, the, 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 um, the mailings would be costs incurred by the town. So that would be something that'd be, you know, the advertising and mailings, and that, I, I don't recall offhand the number of mailings, it may be very small, it may be significant, Katie, do you happen to remember on that?
Um, it was, there, there were not that many a butter mailings, uh, for this project, because, um, the butter across the river is all town land, so.
Oh, okay. It takes, then, in that case, um, you know, that, that would be the only thing is time, and, um.
Um, okay, Bill Crenshaw, any thoughts on this?
We did give them 90 days to get to here, and I'm not seeing any further progress. I mean, it looked like they were wanting to continue to June 9th, but it's hard to imagine the easement thing's gonna be worked out in one week. Time for a week's notice on the hearing, so I'm either kicking it down another 90 days or, or, uh, going with the, uh, denial without prejudice, to me, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Bill, I was gonna say the same thing, that this, I will not vote to delay this another two weeks, it's either a few months, as Bill points out, or we go down Jim's path.
Thanks, um, Andy did not join, I don't think, yet, um, Mike, any comments? I think you're voting on this one, if we, yeah, we'll be, you know.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said.
Thank you. Feel like, uh, the applicant should be allowed to respond here, but we're in the midst of, uh, a motion, Bill, is there a concern there with giving them an opportunity to respond or not?
I don't, I don't, I don't think there is an issue with it, I, I think the key part of this is, is denial without prejudice, which Jim was very careful to frame. If it was with prejudice, of course, that changes everything, but without, they could just come back anytime. Whatever the board's pleasure is on this, and, um, there's, I, I agree that I don't think in 10, in, you know, uh, two weeks, everything would be worked out, and, um, that's probably the case, I think the applicant would, would concur.
So, uh, so Paul, we got a motion on the table here, we're about to vote, um, I don't know, do you have any final comments?
Yeah, I guess if, uh, the world hadn't been in such a place over the last couple of months that we're in now, I'm confident that we would have already had this resolved, I think, right as we were getting into it, everything kind of stopped, um, so that is really the biggest thing, um, here, the other point I'd like to make is that although our issues have been, you know, we're dealing with the butter, but the only reason that we requested a continuation in the first place was in order to avoid having these negotiations, uh, in a public forum. This is really a landowner to landowner issue, it doesn't have much to do with the permit itself, although land ownership is inherently part of it. It's, it was really at the advisory of town staff that we ever requested a continuation. So although I understand the board's frustration with how things have proceeded here, that we would never have been required to do this, we only did it at the request of town staff. So we did not ask to be in this position, again, we have our own weight to pull, we want to do this in good faith and get this taken care of so that we can appear before you and not continue, 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 but, um, this isn't really a matter for the board to decide, it's a, an issue between landowners, and like I said. and like I said, we are far along in the talks to amend this easement and expect a resolution fairly soon. I can't guarantee that anything will be done in two weeks, but I do expect to submit the revised plan and have this issue resolved in the month of June.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
I think the gentleman was very honest with us, though I guess we've been hearing that same scenario in one form or another since Leo first came in and this thing all started. So, I really suggest that when they can get all their ducks put together, everything ready to go, makes it submitted properly, and we can have a definite date for a hearing and have a hearing, I think that that's the way it has to be resolved. In the meantime, my motion is still on the floor.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll go down the line, and Bill Crenshaw, sorry, let me just repeat. This is a motion to withdraw without prejudice, yea or nay?
Well, actually, I should deny, but I'll go with withdraw if that's what the applicant's want.
Thank you.
The applicant would have to. That would be the applicant's request.
The withdrawal, so...
Yeah, otherwise it'd be denial without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. So, to be clear, this is a denial without prejudice. And we'll start with the vote. Bill?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I'm a no, but that's 4-1, so it has been denied without prejudice. And I'll just reiterate for the applicant, it is without prejudice. You know, regardless of why, we're trying to just say, listen, let's just do a reset. We appreciate, you know, various things, but in fairness to all parties, let's hit pause, and we'll be here when you have your materials together. So, thank you very much.
Paul will help. Anyway, you can contact us next weekend. Staff will help you anyway we can get you prepared for this.
Right, of course. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go now to, appreciate we got a lot on the agenda, but we do need to kind of clean a couple of these things up really quickly. Let's go to item six, Planning Board Rules and Regs. We're going to continue this. I think it's going to be a pretty quick one here, but Bill, we do need to talk about when. So, upcoming hearings we have on the 9th and the 23rd of June. Should we punt it to the 23rd, June 20?
I think that the 23rd would be okay. I think right now, we might be safe for putting it out to the 14th, actually, you know, because we don't know what's going to happen in the next couple of meetings.
July 14, I hear July 14. I guess I'll just make the motion to continue Planning Board Rules and Regulations Public Hearing to July 14.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor by voice? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We're continued. The next item is to open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment. This is item five, Determining a Recommendation to the Town Meeting on June 13th to Change Board of Selectmen to a Gender-Neutral Selectmen Throughout the Zoning Bylaws.
Select Board.
Select Board, right. I was reading the agenda. I was going to ask you about that. So, this is, I guess we are sponsoring this, Bill?
Yes, this was strictly to make our zoning bylaws consistent with the change that's being made to the town bylaws, just for clarity.
And this, the intention is for this to go in front of town meeting on, it says right there.
That's correct.
13th.
That's correct.
So, I'm just trying to kind of move this forward, you know, comments from the board, then we'll go to the public. This is a public hearing. So, any concerns or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, my only concern is the timing of this, just because this is going to be a very tough town meeting, and something like this isn't worth wasting people's time on. So, I would prefer to see it moved to the fall or something. I don't see any hurry.
Anyone else?
I think we should push it through. I don't see any issue with this. I agree with Bill. There's perhaps other priorities, but I'll leave it to others to decide the level of priority. I support this.
Okay, hearing no other comment from the board, we'll open it up to the public. Any folks on the, out there in the world, Facebook or otherwise, that want to share their thoughts on this change?
Natalie Robert, 48 Summer Street.
Hi, Natalie. Please go.
I just want to support putting this, approving this and putting it through.
Thank you, Natalie.
Can I make a comment regarding, this is Armand Yarvikirian?
Yes, please, Armand.
All right. So, I'm the one that actually proposed this, and I would like to see it go forward. I understand Bill Crenshaw's concern about that this is time-consuming. I don't see it that way. I think it is something that should be on the 13th, and we should go forward with that for voting.
Thank you. Any last comments from the public? Thank you. All right. So, we will move to, for the vote. Let's see, Bill, we just need to...
This vote is for the, to recommend approval to the town meeting of this article. We're not actually approving the article here. It's approving our recommendation for it.
Thank you. So, I'll move that the planning board recommends the adoption of the change to the language from Board of Selectmen to the Gender-Neutral Select Board.
Second.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, sorry.
Hi, Natalia.
That's from work.
I do that all the time myself. All right. So, that's seconded by Andy. Motion made by Greg, and we'll go by voice vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I believe that's a 5-0. Thanks, everyone.
I think we had 4-1. It was 4-1, I believe.
Yeah, it was.
Pardon me, Bill. 4-1. Thank you, everyone. So, let's see, that's item five and six. And, yeah, okay. So, going to item two, Determination of Major-Miner Modification for 42 Summer Street. My understanding is that the applicant or the developer-owner has requested a continuance. Is the applicant on the line?
Yes. Hi, this is Derek Valles, I'm representative of the city, McDonald Development. I love it about myself. I would like to tell you that I became an architect in 1998, and worked in the corporation at the mill. Many years I've been offering consulting, design consulting. I want to take the opportunity here to thank the board, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate what you're doing, especially with the ongoing situation. And I say this very humble, because I'm also the chairman for another town in Massachusetts. So, to answer the question, yes, we would like to continue this project.
Thank you. So, I was earlier, well, and welcome, Mr. Valles, to the hearing, I guess. And so, I've heard a couple of meetings coming up, the 9th, the 23rd of June, the 14th, and the 28th, I assume, of July. Mr. Valles, is there a date that you had in mind?
I would like, Mr. Chairman, it would be June 9.
June 9th, two weeks from tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Any objections on the board?
I'm sorry, Greg. I could hardly hear Mr. Valles. Could you reiterate what he said and what he's asking for?
Sure. Well, I'll let Mr. Valles step in again. If you could maybe turn up your microphone or step a little bit closer and reiterate to the board your intentions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to introduce again?
Yeah, just briefly, for Jim's sake. Thank you.
Okay. I became an architect in 1998, then moved to act in Massachusetts, worked for OMR Architects, and also worked in Wesley Company at the mill. For the years, I've been consultant for design companies. And I said, I really would like to appreciate what you guys are doing, especially on this time of the pandemic. I know it's hard, and I can tell that because I'm, also, I am the chairman for a planning board in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And we would like to continue on June 9.
Thank you. So, the request is to continue this to June 9.
Whether we continue, Greg, I'm sorry.
It's the determination of major or minor modifications at 42 Summer Street.
I see. And Mr. Valles is representing McDonald?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'd move that we continue the determination of major or minor modification of 42 Summer Street to June 9.
Second.
Seconded in by Andrew. All in favor by voice? Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. We will hear that on the 9th of June.
Hey, Greg, a quick question?
Yes.
We keep mentioning the 23rd is a possible date for planning board meeting. Is that not election day?
Nemser, am I misspoken with that date?
I think it's the 28th is the election day.
Mario?
Mario, with Debbie.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm looking online here. Election is the 23rd. Sorry. Someone did say the 23rd?
It is the 23rd, the election.
Thank you. So...
Planning Board.
So, we want to have a meeting, I assume, Bill? Bill Nemser? Maybe we lost Bill?
He's on mute. No, I was on, sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Yes, we have nothing scheduled on the 23rd, so that works out. Well, if I will...
They're not working in Philadelphia.
Can the participant, sorry, mute, or can the host mute? Linda Holt, please.
Can we mute the person? Sorry, if you can just mute your...
Just doing that now. We ain't coming back.
Excuse me, Linda Holt, can you please mute your microphone?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, right. So, Mr. Chair, yeah, the 23rd, then we will postpone, we'll cancel our meeting on this election day. We have no, I don't think we have anything scheduled for that, so it should be no issue.
Okay. So, thank you, Bill Crenshaw. I will cease from offering the 23rd for continuances. Okay, so moving to the public hearing for 115 Main Street. This is continued from, just from May 19th, but Bill, maybe you can remind us when the last time we had a hearing, you know, a full hearing, I guess, an active hearing. It's been, it's been a couple of months now.
Yes, it's been, I have to look at the exact date. We left just before the pandemic. We haven't had any, I don't believe we've had any online or virtual meetings for this. Right now, we've gone back and forth with several reiterations. We have a staff report that kind of can, I think, guide the process to review this, the public hearings. We have comments and responses from design and engineering. We have a number of documents. So, what we're going to try to do to make sure that it runs smoothly will be, we'll call out the documents and try to have them ready as you want to discuss them. I would recommend to start, if the applicant wants to make an introduction statement or anything, and then perhaps it would be a good idea to pull up the staff report and work from that, but whatever the board's pleasure is.
Well, that sounds good. I guess, just going back through a bit of my history here, we received the latest package on, I believe it was April 14th or thereabouts, and that's the package that it's going to be the, I'd say, the lion's share of the focus tonight. And my understanding at that time was that we were following a schedule pre-determined or pre-agreed upon schedule, you know, the applicant's original crafting, that walked us through the various items that we've identified as being, you know, important kind of subject area conversations with various, potentially various consultants from the applicant's side, and experts, peer review, et cetera, on the town side, to kind of coordinate and lay out a whole game plan, if you will, to get through the large volume of information. So, now, since that submission on the 14th, there's been a bit of dialogue, but I'm going to just turn it over to the applicant for an update on what they've accomplished, I guess, what they've submitted, and what their plans are that they, you know, may want to share with the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would like you to, ask you to please vote for this project tonight.
Okay. Is that, do you have any other comments you'd like to make to preamble the conversation?
Well, I think these guys are doing, have been doing a great job doing everything you want. It's been a long time since they started the project. I think they deserve a vote. Does it, a vote from the board is necessary at this point? You need to deliver, guys.
A vote on what?
The project.
Well, so, I, you know, in fairness, I think we need, as a board, we need to go through and, you know, really examine that. We, you know, I appreciate that sentiment. That sentiment was conveyed to me and us with the package, and that's great. I understand. But at the same time, you know, there's, you know, I can't guarantee any kind of vote, so I need to discuss with the other board members, and I do think that there's an intention to go through quite a bit of the substance of this, of the submission packet in pretty good detail, as much as time allows tonight, you know, just essentially the way we always work. So, I think, you know, and that's not to say that, you know, we're not responding to this request. The request was made clear back on the 14th. I think in the interest of moving the process forward, we've done a couple of things. Number one, Bill has prepared, Bill, Town Planner, Bill Nemser, has begun a list of conditions, draft list of conditions, which is, you know, one of our first steps in beginning to craft a decision. We have a series of proposed conditions from... We have a series of proposed conditions from our town engineer that, again, are really in the interest of wrapping up this chapter and hopefully moving on. So we've got some of those things to consider. We also have a summary from the Town Planner of the probably 50 different bullet points of considerations that the board needs to, you know, just review, I guess. Basically, that's maybe the first thing I'd like to go to next, to kind of remind us, although we're all well-versed, but simply kind of frame this conversation around the specific language that we need to feel has been satisfied to really move the project forward. So I think we can do that as well. And, you know, we also have a a design review of the project that's given careful comments, a bit of dialogue back from the applicant, and now another letter responding to that, that is kind of hot off the press, but we can share that summarizes Design Review's response. So there's, there's quite a lot to get to. And, you know, I'll say that, maybe I'll pause now and give the others on the board an opportunity to briefly speak to the opening statement by the applicant. Any comments?
I, as a general principle, don't agree with, you know, sort of a demand for a vote without due process with a lot of things in the air. I think it sets the wrong tone and don't really appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Bill. Just in general, with a project as complex as this, with as many outstanding questions as this, it's hard to imagine that we're getting a vote.
Chris, Mike, anyone, or Jim?
I would prefer to just keep moving forward with this.
Very good. Thanks. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We need to keep things moving. So I'll just reiterate one important.
It should be, Greg, may I interrupt?
Yes, please, Joe.
Just throw my two cents worth in.
Yes, please.
I don't think the, the, I did not look at the request for a, an up or down vote as being nothing more than a request, not a demand. So I think that they've asked for it, and I think we should accommodate it. If it's not what they want, it's not what they want. But nevertheless, they've asked for it, and after two years on this project, I think they have, I know I would want the right to know where I'm going, either going ahead with a direction, or we're not going ahead at all. So that's my two cents.
You know, talking about the two years on the project, I would say virtually none of that is because of the planning board. So I don't think that that timeframe can really be used as a a point of argument, right? I mean, most of this is due to the applicant, not to us. So he's taken a long time, and therefore it's incumbent on us to do what he wants and vote?
No, I think we need to vote, at least to give him the direction that we are going in the right direction, or we're not. You're right, two years, they've screwed up a whole lot, but they haven't been all by themselves. We had opportunities to make it a little bit, it was simpler, and we didn't do it either. So we both share a little bit into it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bill.
May I suggest that if, if the board, if the boards wishes to, I think if we go down the staff report in the order, it kind of drag, it brings us through the sequence, it can, it can identify any areas that are outstanding, maybe we can make some progress, regardless of whether the board decides to take a vote or not.
I agree, Bill. I want to, I just want to make one more clarification and direct this back to the applicant. My, just for full clarity on what's, what's really possible. I mean, I really, you know, there was a statement in the correspondence that suggested that the applicant was not only asking for a vote tonight, but also unwilling to change drawings, or resubmit, or attend any further meetings. So that, to me, is different than, you know, asking for a vote, requesting a vote, that's good, maybe getting a vote, sure, there's urgency, we get that. But, you know, if, if there's a, a no willingness to make any further changes, we should know that before we go ahead with this dialogue, in my opinion, because I think it will, it'll, you know, it'll, it changes our expectations of what's really possible to improve this project in the course of this dialogue. So to the applicant, can you respond?
Say whether or not you, there will be changes or not?
I, my impression from the letter was they, they will not provide any further changes to the submission that they provided on April 14th. So in other words, if we go into our deliberation, look at all this stuff, and we say, oh, this is good, that's good, but we need this to change, or that to change, I'm not sure that they're going to do it. So, or, you know, even respond at all. So that's why I'm asking the question now before we dive into this.
Yeah, I briefly, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Tim.
Thank you. For what it's worth, I'll just offer to the board and to the members of the public that are present, the content and the tenor of the design review, both as preceded by several bits of narrative and then a specific set of bullet points, all of that, the whole of it, assumes that the project is shows fundamental strengths in ways that matter, and is, in its present state, within striking distance of approval and the spirit of identifying, in tandem with identifying things that, in my opinion, are problematic. In just about every case, those were accompanied by recommendations and advice, which, in my professional opinion, offers modest incremental changes which could yield a, a, an approvable project. So, so the content of my response dismissed the notion that it was intended to serve an up or down vote, but assumed that it was intended to nurture a promising project, to continue its path of improvement until it's, it had achieved the objectives that it needs to and can.
Thank you. And that's really the spirit that we approach all of our projects that I've been a part of on the, on this board, that we work together. We Design Review, Wayne, Engineering, Bill, everybody, we, you know, we work until we're in a place where, you know, a place of yes, generally. I mean, I honestly don't recall anything other than a yes vote on projects such as this over my seven years on the board. So, and it's all really a product of working together to iron out these differences of opinion. And I think, just to paraphrase, Tim, it sounds like, in your opinion, that we're in striking distance. And, and so that's kind of stuck out to me as a, quite a disappointment in receiving that letter, that, you know, so much progress has been made, yet that's the end, and there's no, there's, doesn't seem to be any further flexibility to make changes. So any other comments? Maybe, Wayne, if you, if you can just kind of give your quick 30-second summary of how your feedback is structured, and how, I guess, if you can comment on whether or not you feel we're similarly in striking distance from your end of things.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, be glad to. I guess, just for the record, we did receive the applicant's resubmital of April 14th, as the chairman mentioned. Because of the complexity of this project, we actually structured three response letters dated April 27th. One addressed structural issues pertaining to the retaining wall adjacent to the Esbit River. One discussed environmental issues relative to that retaining wall and the site as a whole, based on the proximity to the river. And one basically is a follow-up closure letter relative to civil and drainage issues for the project. I'll summarize very briefly. The structural letter, you know, the, in summary, if you guys have looked through it, there's a section at the end where I make recommendations. All three of these letters basically recommend to the board that the project can be approved with certain conditions. From a structural standpoint, the details and the calculations of the wall need to be further refined and developed in order to be acceptable from an engineering standpoint. With the project's site and traffic issues being resolved, we recommend that issues related to the retaining wall be listed as a condition of the approval, of the planning board's approval. From an environmental perspective, same thing, all site, traffic, and excuse me, all project site and traffic issues have been resolved. We recommend that all issues related to, regarding the retaining wall, and all environmental issues relative to the site and permitting, be listed as a condition of the planning board's approval. Please note that the project has filed a notice of intent with the CONCOM, and the CONCOM can see that, see the project through relative to any remaining issues regarding the wall or environmental permitting of the site. For the civil and site part of the project, any, there are a few remaining technical drainage and stormwater comments that should be addressed. There was, can certainly be conditioned. I've recommended those be conditioned. And those could be simply just conditioned as part of the planning board's approval, if that's something that the planning board wishes. So all issues, while they may not be minor, as I said, with the retaining wall and environmental issues, they certainly could be conditioned, understanding that this project still has to go through the Conservation Commission for approval. I can get into any more detail as want, as you guys want, but I wanted to be as quick and painless as possible, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, you know, so I'll just, just remind folks that, you know, that, when, when we say things like, within striking distance, you know, from the peer reviews' point of view, you know, that's a recommendation to the board, and the board will make a determination at the end of the day about what items may or may not, you know, need to be revised in drawings, or what items could be conditioned. We're going to get into that. But it, but it sounds like, at a high level, I'll just summarize from both, both of our peer, peer review consultants, that we've got a project that is very close. And, and so that's, maybe I'll just, at this point, use that as a preface to go back to the applicant and say, you know, can you please clarify your intentions about revising drawings going forward beyond this meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thanks. Thanks for the update on the button about the engineer and conservation to approve this project. I, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe, you know, we, we see projects all the time. They come in, we approve, they, they change, because that's a natural thing to do. And I think there's some consideration where you could, you know, do changes. But, Mr. Chairman, we, we really need a vote. This pandemic has been devastating for many people, jobs, opportunities, and you have an old building over there. Make it happen, make something good for the town. The town deserves it, your client deserves a vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will you commit to revising drawings that we've requested be revised?
There's always the, the chance to do that, Mr. Chairman. As I said, me, I am a designer, everything changes. And yes, we will change anything that we need to, as long as it, you know, it's fair for the, for the town and for the client.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Mike, if we could call up the staff report, please? Bill, do you want to walk us through this quickly? Maybe on mute, just a guess?
Whoops, I just explained the whole thing that quick. Yeah, this, the staff report, the purpose of this is just to give an overall snapshot of what's looked at in the review process and in the approval process. There's an, so when we get to Section 3, where there's an analysis, that's really where the, oh, I'm trying to turn it, Mike, if you could scoot up just a smidge there. The analysis is where, basically, where we're advising any out, any issues that are going to be affecting the project. In this case, there's a development agreement. And the reason there's a development agreement, for those of us in the public who are not familiar with, this, this project involves a density bonus. I believe there's 11 or 12 additional units for this. As part of the agreement, the applicant is required and has agreed to dedicate, I think it is seven affordable units for this. So that, that's the reason for a development agreement. Additionally, there's a side issue of, as Wayne pointed out, with the, the, the river wall and the potential with having to work with other jurisdictions that are out of the town's control. So that's all addressed here, basically. The, the, right here, what I tried to do is highlight what I thought were the, from the analysis, what, what were the, the, any pros and cons that were obvious, and that were useful to make a determination. The first is that this project does forward the town's affordable housing goals. It's, that's called for in both our new master plan, our housing production plan, and the community development principles. It will allow for, on this project, if it was approved as presented, it would allow all 26 units to count against the town's subsidized housing inventory. That's a big plus for the town in obtaining safe harbor, and well as meeting the requirements of our residents for for creation of affordable units. Secondly, this project does feature riverfront access. And again, this is an objective of the master plan, open space recreation plan, and the community development principles. It's also a requirement in the downtown overlay district, wherever there's waterfront property or projects being proposed. The last, the last bullet I'd like to hit is on redevelopment, because it is a previously disturbed site. It does fall in with our infill, our infill objectives to reuse existing sites. It will also increase the number of downtown residents, which will help generate a critical mass of residents downtown, and also be consistent with the objectives of our downtown overlay district to add residential units downtown. Scooting down just a little more, the regulatory framework, this project, they're asking for a site plan review, which is what we're doing. There's two special permits allowed, or requested, that each is required for a specific ask of the applicant. And it has to demonstrate consistency with the downtown overlay district, which is adopted in the zoning bylaws by town meeting. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't necessarily mean that everything has to be exactly as it's proposed there, but it has to be consistent with it, or show how it's trying to achieve consistency with the objectives listed in the staff report. And just scooting ahead, this has been through, so far as internal reviews, there's has been no outstanding public service or public safety comments that are noted. The Building Commissioner has, has provided no comment or concerns. Right now, we have, the issues outstanding are going to be with conservation, and that's in the future, and with design and engineering, which we're dealing with tonight. The next two criterias, I won't, I won't read, but we have, we do have to, you have to demonstrate that the board finds that these criterias have been met or addressed. And there's a special cri, special permit criteria, and then an additional criteria, the downtown overlay district. Again, this is in the zoning bylaws, this is not something that's optional. We do have to demonstrate consistency with it. And lastly, the design review criteria. There's been a lot of There's been a lot of question about the design review process and we're all learning from it. But in, in essence, I think everything that is generally called for in design review is, is in the zoning bylaws and the specifics are all contained within the planning board rules and regulations. This is not, most of it's not new in the, in the bylaws, in the rules and regulations are some new details. I provided the board with a kind of a cheat sheet, the checklist they can go over to, when, to review the design criteria when the time comes. And Mike, if you can go down just a smidge more, the next section. The, the last part is recommendations. If the board chooses to take a vote at one point, these are my initial draft conditions of approval. On, there's some that, there's definitely room for additional things. And because we have a development agreement, there's a possibility that, that some of the items may be shifted to the development agreement for one reason or another. But I think after the, what I'd recommend is if the, Mr. Chair, if you just want to kind of run through and ask questions kind of in the order maybe that the staff report is, it will kind of help keep things on a, on a flow that makes sense. And that's how it's ordered. And then the final, the final section is detailing what actions would be required whenever, eventually to bring this to a vote, that would be what's required. So I'll, I'll answer any procedural questions, I guess.
Yeah, thanks. And I'm just swimming in my head a little bit about how to tackle this, but I think, you know, maybe one thing to reiterate for folks is that, you know, we've heard from both peer review consultants. And just in the interest of kind of taking some items off the table, it sounds to me, first of all, just to reiterate for folks that the structural and environmental comments, well, I mean, it's a question to the board, maybe, maybe we can discuss this very briefly. The, the assertion is that the environmental and structural comments or concerns raised by VHB can be deferred or conditioned and then picked up by the Conservation Commission. Does the board feel comfortable with that approach to those particular comments?
Yes, I do, Greg.
Thank you.
Greg, I assume that means that this, we will condition it, I, I assume you're envisioning it will condition it with DPW and Wayne's, essentially Wayne's sign-off on engineering items. So that we're not just allowing the COMCOM to not go down that road, but we will be Wayne's sign-off.
Katie, if you're on, if you, if you want to jump in and kind of give us a picture of what you're envisioning.
Yeah, so actually, in regards to Wayne and DPW, Wayne is also the peer review reviewer and V, as well as VHB for the CONSCOM. So in past projects, we always take into account any of Wayne's and DPW's comments. And CONSCOM, besides being in charge of, you know, the Wetlands Protection Act, and we're also the Stormwater Authority in Maynard, so it's actually up to the CONSCOM to approve the stormwater management permit. And as, with that as well, it's reviewed by Wayne and DPW. But I'm taking a look at the conditions and some of these outstanding items, these are pretty common things that are already kind of a part of the conservation review process that we would have been going over anyway. I just wanted to make that clear.
So if, if I may, Katie, it sounds like we're saying that the design issues are really part of the purview of the CONCOM and not necessarily site plan review.
The stormwater issues, this, anything regarding stormwater and having to do with the proximity to the river and, you know, potential erosion and sedimentation.
Yep. And my understanding from Wayne is that those, those are the majority of his remaining feedback, I believe. Right, Wayne.
That is correct, Chris, and Katie, both of you are correct, you know, CONCOM is the Stormwater Authority. When we do a peer review, we do a comprehensive and holistic peer review based on site zoning, general engineering and stormwater, but technically, there are planning boards that don't review stormwater and the Conservation Commission is left with reviewing all the stormwater, stormwater aspects of a project. So we do it holistically to basically protect the town. But Katie's right, it is her purview to, to, you know, approve, her and her commission to approve that ultimately. The board really doesn't have the, the authority to make a decision one way or another relative to the stormwater issues.
My opinion, Greg, is that all makes sense and lines up really well.
Thanks.
Problem kicking that to CONCOM.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Wayne, this is, this is for Wayne and Katie. In the case of the upcoming Conservation Commission review, the work that has been done already for the peer review, much of that would just be applied to the conservation review, is that correct, Wayne?
I, I believe that, you know, all of the drainage, drainage and stormwater issues have been looked at, there are additional issues that the commission will deal with relative to DEP permitting, et cetera, that we haven't really focused on, we've mentioned it in the review, but that, that will become more prevalent during the commission review, I believe, I'll let Katie comment further.
Yeah, I mean, in other words, expenses incurred, forty's review would also, the, the work would also apply towards the conservation.
Yeah, sorry, Bill, maybe I misunderstood, misinterpreted your question, yes, correct.
Thank you. So that, that all makes sense to me, and not to just jump back in, but I, I just want to raise the question about the wall. It's a structural design problem, not a stormwater problem. You know, the, I'm in concept okay with, with the idea of deferring it or, you know, conditioning it. But I just wanted to hear about what kind of scope the Conservation Commission has over structural design issues such as the ones that were highlighted in the peer review comments by VHB.
Okay, so because this is a structure directly, not just within the riverfront area, but that affects the river itself. Granted, I haven't, we haven't permitted any walls in my time here, but as part of the review, the CONSCOM would be looking at that and, you know, it would be based on Wayne's recommendations as to the structural integrity. So they'd be, he'd be recommending to the CONSCOM if it's, you know, if it's structurally bound.
Another, another option, depending on the wording, and I have not reviewed Bill and Katie's draft conditions yet, folks, but you could, the, the board could just condition that any engineering and issues related to that retaining wall be peer reviewed and approved and a recommendation be made to the board prior to certain things happening. It, it doesn't mean that the board has to necessarily be out of the mix going forward, it's just that they would have theoretically already approved the project as a whole with some details that still need to be done prior to.
And another, another, another point is a part of the notice of intent application, which through that, you end up with the order of conditions, which is really the permit to work in the wetland. The notice of intent isn't just reviewed by CONSCOM and Wayne at VHB, it's also reviewed by the state. The DEP does a preliminary review on all applications and provides comment back to the CONSCOM as well. So they will comment on if there are any other licenses or anything from the state that are required from the wall. Thus far, I, after I've reviewed it and spoken with their consultant, I don't think they're necessarily going to need a license from the DEP for chapter 91 waterways because the, the project's not expanding the footprint further into the river. Because chapter 91, really, what that deals with is whether or not, like, protecting navigable waters. And this isn't really going to have effect on that. But I, we spoke to the, the person reviewing the project today and they should have comments back in the next two days. And then right now, we're scheduled to review the notice of intent on June 9th.
Okay, so with that being the, the general lay of the land, back to the board, any other concerns about conditioning either structural comments or, or structural design or wetlands, stormwater design to either, I guess we can choose, I guess, whether it's, you know, kind of fully delegated to the Conservation Commission by, sort of by default, really. Or in the case of the wall, it sounds like we have a choice, whether we could ask for, you know, the, the items to be cleared up and brought back to us after a decision is made. Or we could also choose for the Conservation Commission to ensure through their purview that the wall is built according to VHB's recommendations. Any thoughts? Any general support for that idea, I guess? I want to try to take these items off the table is really what I'm trying to do.
I, I support working, conditioning it either with, as, I support either option, Greg, based on your sort of direction.
Okay. So I'm gonna, you know, it's obviously still fair game, but, you know, I, I think for the purposes of this conversation, I would suggest that we have talked about those issues, certainly the site plan, kind of site civil stuff, I know that there's, you know, a tie-in to the landscape plan and the overall plan, so I think that there likely will be further comment on the sort of general civil site plan going forward, so that's, I think, still, you know, to be discussed. My, my inclination, I guess, in going to the, looking at the staff report is that rather than starting with the special permit criteria, it might make more sense to talk about the downtown overlay district criteria, those being more stringent or at a higher bar essentially to clear. And we can certainly tick through special permit criteria after that, but I would assume, you know, largely that if we are in a place, in a good place with the DOD, that we're probably doing okay on the special permit criteria as well, any objections to that approach? Okay, so, I, I mean, you know, guys, you gotta just, just stop me if, if you see a better way to do this, but I, I was thinking that, you know, in advance of kind of reviewing in more specificity, design review comments, et cetera, that we could at least take a, a, a high pass at, at this stuff and I, I know Tim has some thoughts that we'd like him to share on the role of the district and, and how it relates to this project. So with that said, you know, I'll just kind of tick through these, I'm, I'm, let's see, I'm not, I'm looking at my own copy. Fostering a vibrant, attractive and durable downtown, I'm just going to skip through these and I guess probably what we're looking for are for folks to raise their hand, folks on the board, raise their hand and say, you know, I need to see more evidence of this one, or this, I'm not sold on this one, or something, something like that, and at least we can sort of flag items that need to be, you know, that we would ask for further support on. So, so fostering a vibrant, attractive and durable downtown. Encouraging quality development in the downtown.
Well, Greg, can you help me out, where are you reading from?
Sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the screen that is, I believe.
Oh, the checklist, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm reading under downtown overlay district purposes, which Bill has summarized. So I was on bullet point two.
Okay, well, and I need more information on bullet point one.
Got it.
Regards to the commercial space.
Vibrant, attractive, durable downtown, so in terms of the commercial space, so that's an item for conversation.
Greg, can I interrupt for a moment?
Yep.
It occurs to me as I, as, as we launch into this and I look at the kind of Brady Bunch or Hollywood Squares screen here and see some members of the public and folks who have not been participants in all the back and forth between the applicant and review. It seems to me that the, the the interest of the public might be better serves by a hearing of the design review. And by hearing, I, I really mean, I'd like to, I'd like to read into the record and for the benefit of those folk, those members of the public who are present tonight. So that perhaps as, as you go down this checklist and ask for the board members to weigh in on whether they feel convinced or interested in a little bit more evidence, members of the public might be at least a little bit clued in to some of the background information that allows the board members to make the judgments and have the opinions they have.
It's, it's a fair point, the, the board is speaking from the privilege, I guess, of having an advanced preview of the design review comments and, you know, almost two years of review of this project. You know, my intent here was to set the tone for, you know, the kind of regulatory context essentially for approving this project. It's on the screen. Board members have reviewed it, I don't know, any objections to Tim's suggestion from others? So.
I think it's generally a good idea, but let's, you know, maybe try to headline it as much as possible, like, you know, I, you have a passion for Tim, which is great, but sometimes the wealth of detail can get long, I think, for some folks.
So yes, and just looking at the clock, it's eight twenty and, you know, I really, we've said in the past that nine thirty is our kind of Cinderella moment. So let's just keep that in mind and we're, we're going to need to still get through quite a lot tonight. So with that, Tim, maybe if you can just carry us through your review and I'd say if we can limit it to fifteen minutes, I think that'd be great.
I promise to do my best.
Mr. Chairman, what would you like me to have on screen, is there a specific file I should?
Tim, Tim, just please, please let Mike know what you'd like to put on the screen.
Thanks, Mike. I'm gonna read from a few things, if you could put the first one up, my May 26 memo, that's today.
Is, is that a, is that part of the record, I guess that's a question for Bill, if that made it in time or if it's, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, honest, I, in hindsight, I was thinking that that's the best thing to put up anyways, it's, so that might not, not be on board docs.
It is, it is. It's there. Under peer, I, she was, Mike, if you look under, it's, it's on item.
I'm just gonna read it, so I'm not sure we need it to be visible as well.
Should be second from the top, I think.
Let's get a design peer review.
There it is.
So if I may, while you're getting that up, again, I'll say for the members of the public, so design review was re-engaged after several months off at, at or about April 14th with the submission of the latest package from the applicant. Design review had been active from, I think, December 2018 through September 2019, so something like nine, 10 months. And has now been on hold while the project proceeded through a number of other important aspects of solving some of the complexities. I mention that because it may color some of, some of the issues and, and items that are regarded as problematic from a design standpoint. Ironically, we're actually, in, in some cases, may have been generated through resolving the work in other facets of the project. But because design review was put on hold, the opportunity for a kind of coordinated, collaborated resolution was not present. So that's water under the bridge. The first two things that need to be said. In the April 14th package, I found a couple of significant conflicts. One, there were One, there were the architectural drawings included black line, sort of conventional drafted plans, elevations, those conventional components of an architectural set, which were formatted and dimensioned on title block and carried the seal and stamp and signature of the Registered Architect Peter Carb. And another set of elevations was represented in color rendered drawings and a corresponding set of three dimensional colored model views. The color representations were not formatted, which is to say they did not appear on Mr. Carb's or any other title block. That they weren't dated, so it appeared to me in my professional judgment that these were perhaps not an integral part of the application, but somehow supplementary. I pointed out some differences, not just in, in the black and white, that black and white looks different from color, but they actually represented differences in the building. The black and white building represented a significant overhanging cornice. For example, there was a base, which is a of a given height and proportion in the black and white and some other articulations, belt course and some other kind of brick detailing things that were different from one to the other. So I reached out to the applicant on the twenty eighth, pointing out the discrepancy and just asking them which of these drawings represented their intent. On May second, I reached out again, not having received any input and, and asked, would they please reply to my questions? It still wasn't, it still wasn't confident that I knew which drawing they meant. And on May seventh, I reached out to the applicant again and indicated that I would proceed under the assumption that the black line drawings on title block and integrated into the drawing set were those which conveyed with specificity the intent of the proposal. And I would regard the color drawings as a more diffuse representation of the proposal. I did receive a commentary from the applicant on the twenty second, this is Friday, three days ago, and the applicant indicated that, that in fact, the color drawings represented their, more closely represented their intent for what the building design would look like. So there's two things to point out here. One, those drawings, those color drawings, which they say are what they mean, don't agree with the plans. And by don't agree, just one example is that the window locations in the color drawings are not the same as the window locations in the floor plan drawings. So any differences need to be resolved. It's not necessary that they change the elevations, for example, it might work just as well to change the plans, but the plans and elevations need to represent the same congruent cohesive proposal for a building. The, the second thing is worth noting in my professional opinion, that the language of the applicant's response causes to me a little bit of concern because it suggests that the, it suggests to me that the, the drawings may not really ever represent the specific intent for the project. You know, they say, you know, more closely represents, represents our intent for what the design of the building would look like. And I just want to note for, for everybody, documents submitted for approval are not malleable or vague. As in, you know, we used to use the, the old disclaimer, artist rendering. You know, we'd do some careful black line drafted drawings and then we'd put a pretty picture on the front and we'd call that artist rendering. Drawings submitted for approval need to be specific and represent precisely the intent of the materials, features, characteristics and attributes, et cetera. And, you know, in twenty twenty, appropriately detailed parametric model, models represent intent in a rich and vibrant way without any loss or diffusion of specificity. It's important that everybody understand that, and especially the applicant. The next item of confusion.
Can I just interrupt for one sec, Tim? I'm very, very sorry, especially since I made a comment about hurrying, so bad on me. You know, I just want to highlight or ask Bill from a kind of regulation standpoint, you know, we have previously said on a number of occasions that if we don't have, you know, full submittals, accurate submittals, we're not going to proceed with a hearing. And in here, we have a lot of evidence, again, you know, and I think about other projects from this builder where adherence to the drawings has not necessarily been a strong point. And here we can't even get a definitive drawing, you know, and combined with an ask to vote. So I'm feeling extremely uncomfortable and I just want to thank Tim for, you know, highlighting this in great detail, very clearly for everyone to understand, but I think it speaks to a number of issues, both regulatory and with the project. Sorry, Tim, please go on.
Thank you. This next issue has to do with the north end of the promenade as the, the pathway exits the subject parcel and enters onto that small distance between the subject parcel and the Assamet River Rail Trail. Some for members of the public, it's on the order of twenty or thirty feet, something like that.
Greg, could we bring up an image of that location?
Yeah.
So two things here, the, the thing that caught my eye is that the, the promenade has a width, which is, you'll see, I've got some opinions about that, but overall, the width of the promenade is relatively broad. And that's, I think, important to the value and the contribution that the project is, is proposing to make to the district. In the proposal, that breadth is terminated at the north boundary of the parcel. A retaining wall delineates that parcel from, call it the kind of parking lot toward the rail trail. And that retaining wall continues west to a point where it is something like as little as three, it's not dimensioned, it may be as little as three or four feet from.
Hey, Tim, sorry to interrupt. Can you help us locate a image that would illustrate what you're talking about? Is it on the full plan set?
Yeah, it would be on there, it would be on their site plan or their landscape plan. I think it would also be on their stormwater plan.
Would be under the file of one fifteen Main Street full set.
The, the, the drawing that Tim's talking about is under, if you go under architecture F, and then you'll see a number of documents and it's entitled Maynard Promenade three twenty six twenty. So what you're gonna do is just look under architecture.
I got you, Bill. Thank you. That, that type of direction is perfect.
There we go.
Thanks, everyone. Go ahead, Tim.
I'm just seeing Michael there. Looking good, Mike, but you're not that area. I'm happy to continue, but I don't see the graphic.
I'm seeing it.
I see it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, I've got it in my head.
It's the landscape plan, Tim.
Yeah, thanks. So the, where the promenade, so if you can all just call your attention, that, that spot at which the promenade meets the, the northern boundary of the parcel, and you'll see a retaining wall continues from east to west and creates a kind of gateway. Everybody see that? So the, so the, so the width of the promenade relatively broad behind us to our south is now just terminated at that wall, at which point a, call it three foot wide path sort of squirts out and does a very tight S curve out and around and back toward the rail trail. So I'm concerned for a couple of things. In the simplest sense, it's my strong opinion that the breadth, you know, the, look, really, the role of the promenade is to take the, the, the kind of civic space, the breadth and grandeur of this civic space proposed for the east side of the river and with that, connect Main Street to the rail trail. Now, the subject parcel does not quite make the, complete the span to the rail trail. So I was alarmed to see how tightly the promenade became pinched at that point. My notice, my attention was first drawn to that S curve, which feels, you know, there's a real, to me, a real loss of kind of the continuity and grandeur of that wi, of that width. Looking more closely, I went out to the site and I see that, that there exists in that spot a utility pole and an electrical box. The utility pole didn't, the utility pole did appear to be on the applicant's existing conditions document. The electrical box did not appear present. I submitted some questions to the applicant engineer. He answered them graciously. We spoke on the phone. And I then referred to the Assamet River Rail Trail hundred percent construction documents, which are highly detailed in exactly that area and transposed the detail from the rail trail over the applicant's proposal. And it appears to me that the electrical box is exactly in the middle of that narrow path. So I'm concerned that the path goes from quite wide to very narrow. I think that's not a good thing. I'm concerned that the S curve is, is kind of counter to the continuity. In addition to, to being too narrow, that this kind of aggressive curve seems unlike the connection and continuity we want. It, it, the engineer indicated to me that it was their intent to pass the path between the utility pole and the electrical box, which seems to me especially problematic and undesirable from an experiential standpoint. From a, from any member of the public asked to kind of pass through that gateway, that's not, not a grand civic feeling thing to do. The, in, in trying to understand the, the kind of gateway or the pinch point of this retaining wall, Keneo, their engineer, answered that the way the stormwater solution was designed required that retaining wall to hold back the earth on the north side of, you know, at the town's parcel, so that there could be a vertical face to help manage the drainage on the, on the applicant site. So, you know, that, that is the stormwater solution that they proposed. And I, I don't question that it works for stormwater, but it, it makes a kind of a costly compromise, in, in my opinion, to the, the civic character, the opportunity to really realize the connection that that promenade has, has great promise to show. Now, the applicant responded that they would be, in, in my response to them, I allowed or recognized, look, you guys don't even own this chunk. It would make sense to me if you said, hey, don't, we wouldn't want to build anything over there. If the town wants to see it, the town can do it. Fair enough. I can't disagree with that from my vantage point. But if, if that's true, then it's also incumbent on the applicant not to make that potential later solution by the town more difficult, but to make it more possible. And I think if this aspect of this proposal were to proceed as designed, I think it would need somehow to be, I don't know, I imagine it would have to somehow be undone before it were possible for the town to then propose a kind of generous, commodious connection to bridge that gap.
Can I, can I ask a question quick? Wayne, I don't know if you've studied or Tim, and maybe we just zoom in on the grades, but do we feel that there's possibility? I feel like this came up, a possibility to create accessible connectivity between the, you know, the, the promenade and the town property at the, I mean, the S curve suggests you're climbing a slope and there is a slope there.
There is a grading issue there, Mr. Chairman. You are correct. Town owned property, you know, is something different possible, maybe? You know, I, off the top of my head, we've been looking at this for so long, I don't remember that retaining wall, if that has to do with maintaining the floodplain, I'd have to look a little closer at that with the engineer to understand if that's the case, but let's say it is true. You know, I don't, I don't know, I definitely understand Tim's perspective on this. It would be better to have a larger transition into the rail trail. However, you know, on one hand, the applicant's doing what they can on their property and they're, they're creating a pathway to connect to the rail trail. There is only a, a small pathway connection up there now, so I don't know. I can see it both ways, but I definitely understand Tim's perspective. I don't know, I, I, as I say, I'm kind of split on this. There are, there are several different ways to look at it.
Okay.
So Greg, you know, I don't know about the connectivity issues and the proper design, but in general, I'm still a little lost on the details of the work being done on town property. And so that would be one of the things I'd be looking for. There's more information, more design details on all the work being done on town property, both on the north and south end of the site.
Right, on, on the streetscape as well as in this area. And, and you know, this drawing has a suggestion of a, of a connection, but is that shown on the site plans? Not that I'm, not that I can recall, so. Okay, maybe we just mark that as noted unless folks on the board want to discuss that any further. Tim, you can move ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So the next bits of design review come in two categories. One has to do with, in my opinion, appropriateness of the proposal for its site, its context, the overlay district. I start with a bit of a narrative and then I get into bullet points. So, so, so three, at the highest level, the broad strokes of this project are strong. That it includes residential upstairs from retail, that includes a civic space on the river, those things are wonderful. The, the devil's in the details, however, important aspects of the project relating to the design have become more problematic, not less during that period of time when design review was on hold from September twenty nineteen through May twenty twenty. Several design improvements, however, remain well within reach. If enough of them are implemented, they can make all the necessary difference. Project's got three components as a mixed use project, in my opinion, fundamentally. The residential, the residential component is a little bit problematic, not because I don't see increasing density as good for the district or consistent with the district, but in that it generates so very much parking on this site that such a large majority of this riverfront site would be paved and dedicated to cars is far from ideal. It's a real stretch for the district's purposes and goals. The geometric difficulty of distributing and circulating to the parking spaces causes inefficiency in the ratio of spots to paving overall, which is to say a very tricky puzzle to solve. This is not news, of course. I remain convinced that the stacked parking scheme, which the applicant and I reviewed in December twenty eighteen, would be very effective. While that scheme would introduce two big expenses, it would also add substantial value to the parcel by freeing its western half. The paving and parking proposal per the, the current C two and C six creates serious challenges for the retail space and the civic space. A more generous, permissive parking waiver might help. Is there a scenario by which some of the parking spaces become even smaller? I observed that in twenty twenty, very few cars are of average size. Out my office window, I look over the basin and I see mostly very. Out my office window, I look over the basin, and I see mostly very small compact cars and very big pickup trucks. There may be a way to consider some number of much smaller cars. So I see the residential as problematic in that it generates parking. There may have been some more creative solutions. I didn't see them. Set that aside, the retail here, the second component, the retail suffers in a couple of ways. First, and fundamentally, there's just so very little of it. This is a big project. It's an important site. It's kind of halfway between the mill and downtown. There's a very small kind of a token gesture to include more than zero. There's a little bit, it's not nothing. It's a decent breadth of storefront, very shallow, you know, not a great volume of retail. Second, qualitatively, that retail space is relatively short. Folks looking to fill retail space typically are looking for 12-foot ceilings and generous back-of-house allocation. I see that both of those things as kind of absent and creating a challenge for the applicant. Now, I mention those things and I bring up those points because I think the struggles and the kind of imperfections that could be acceptable in those important aspects of the project, in my opinion, can be made acceptable through the success of the project's third component, and that is its civic contribution. From the Behringer report to the master plan, to the design and development principles that we see posted in Town Hall, to the advent of the cultural district in recent years, over and over and over, groups and experts and advisors and our fellow citizens have been reminding us of the value and the virtue of embracing the river and the need to do it at some of our new development sites in the overlay district. Much of the overlay district does not have that opportunity. So the aspirations for the district and the town to embrace the river are on the shoulders of this very small number of parcels which do have that opportunity. In my opinion, if the promenade achieves a grace and a dignity on a civic scale proportional to this tremendous riverfront opportunity connecting Main Street to the rail trail and Tobin Park beyond it, that success will essentially float the project. And by that, I mean, yeah, kind of create some excuses for the other aspects of it to be less than fantastic. They can compensate for subpar and overpavement, subpar retail and the overpavement of the site. In my opinion, the April 20 scheme has not yet achieved that. My primary concern here is that the promenade has narrowed. When we first saw it in spring of 2019, maybe it was winter of 2019, it was 25 feet wide. It has since been narrowed incrementally, time after time, and narrowed further in absence of design review over the winter, to a point where I'm concerned that its contribution to the town, the project, and the district is just not quite proportional to the ask that this project is looking for to earn its place in the overlay district. One thing in particular that, well, just a couple of things there I'll mention. One, the district here has a zero lot line, which is to say, most parcels in town are required for the development and the building to be set back some distance from the front yard, from the backyard, from the side yard. In this district, this parcel has a zero lot line, and the building could be built directly on the lot line to the east. And I've recommended that through multiple iterations, really from, you know, throughout the project. And although the applicant has responded that it's impossible or unsafe or illegal to do that, it hasn't been demonstrated to me. I know that zero lot line conditions are common in town. I believe the building I'm in now has zero lot line on both sides, north and south. It's common throughout downtown. It's common in urban areas all over the world. I don't doubt that it might complicate things for construction, but from the east to the west on this parcel, dimension is at a premium. The rail trail has been eroded and diminished. We have three feet to the east there for the taking, and the applicant has declined for the duration in the project to consume that space to the relief and benefit of the rail trail. I think that's a big deal. Here's the bullet points that I include with that memo. This was forwarded to the applicant on May 2nd. In my opinion, professional opinion of design review, to earn its place in the downtown mixed-use overlay district, this project's civic space must be improved. The proposal must eliminate or reduce the promenade's pinch point through some combination of the adjustments that I've suggested and identified. Regularize the row of new trees on the promenade's east side. Make the row unbroken and trace either a straight line or a single smooth continuous arc. Make the spacing of the trees consistent and precise. Add a hedge or something similar to visually screen the parking lot from the promenade. My opinion, the picnic tables, broad not dimension, but seem to be perhaps as much as five or six feet in diameter, seem to be located in a problematic way as they are centered in the promenade. And what do I say here? Oh, then the last point is the one I made earlier about the pinch point at the north boundary to the promenade. So in my May 2nd advice to the applicant, I asserted that those several bullet points were achievable and would make, in my opinion, all the difference to make this project entirely appropriate for the district. Then on May 7th, I submitted a distinct set of observations and recommendations having to do strictly with building elevations, which is to say, not broader aspects of whether the design is appropriate for the district, but questions having only to do with two-dimensional elevations of the building.
Hey, Tim. On that note, I think it might be good to take a pause, and it seems that you've kind of parsed out, you're about to transition into elevations. I think maybe it's a time to hear if anyone on the board has questions, but also give the applicant a chance to respond to what's been presented so far. There's a lot of detail, and I think it would be a good time.
Thank you. That's fine.
Any comments from the board before I ask the applicant for a response?
I'd like to hear from Lee's first, but...
I'm sorry, Andrew.
I'd prefer to hear from Mr. Valie's first, but I would defer to whoever else was just about to speak.
Yeah, it's Bill. It's just a general agreement that the amount of surface parking is really compromising the promenade design, and there may be other ways of addressing that. You know, the most obvious one is fewer dwelling units equals less parking. But then again, it seems to me if we can get two of those spaces out of there, and you know, maybe they lease them in the muni lot or something, it would make a big difference on how much room we had to play with the promenade.
Thank you. Okay. So to the applicant, any comment you'd like to make at this point? I think, you know, Tim was beginning to transition into comments about the building itself, but while we have a conversation going about the site, maybe now's a good time to hear any response.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been following this project since the beginning, so that's almost two years now. And I think everything that has been said over here, there are some good points, there are some other points. With all due respect, Tim has, which I met him a long time ago when I work in Maynard, I hope he remembers me. All these little details are just the icing cake of the cake, and I don't see why not we can work with the town to look up at that entrance at the top and things like that. I can't imagine how to change the, you know, the layout of the parking, because client has been spending a lot of money on this. I think, go back to my petition, I think they deserve a vote. From the other two boards, I'd heard everything looks good. So I think my client, you know, is willing to work on little things here and meet your criteria as long as we get a vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I interject one thing here, please? I wanted, we had this discussion about the downtown overlay district and the parking issues before, and I think it's, at this point, the downtown overlay district is adopted with the idea that there's going to be compromises in parking required. If any downtown area is going to have that. If there's a shortage of parking for the number of units, I would recommend that we examine, you know, the number of spaces that we're requiring for a unit. And if we're having a studio apartment or a one-bedroom apartment, that certainly has to provide a different parking spot generation. And I think the DOD recognized this when it was adopted. I think that's key. The second thing I would say is that the DOD is intended to allow a level of flexibility with design with certain criteria in that. And the idea of increasing density downtown, and particularly with affordable units, is something that is a goal, every bit as important as everything else we're talking about here. And I don't think we should lose sight of that. And I think the scheme of things, the grand scheme of things, these are all just components of what we're trying to do. And I think it's very important that we remember that.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment too. We spent a lot of time, as you all remember, talking about traffic and circulation and so forth. And I think I'm not going to get back into the discussion of unit count. That's between the board and the applicant. But I think for the unit count that was being requested, I think that the board basically decided that, you know, so many spots, and I'm not going to remember the number, but so many spots were required in order to make this project work from the board's perspective. We all worked with the applicant to make that as amenable as possible. You know, is this parking layout ideal? Certainly not. Does it work? I think we proved that it does. To Tim's comment, you know, I wish that we didn't have to have that pinch point there. But in order to get spots 25 through 27 to work, that had to occur in order to get the turning radiuses for normal-sized passenger cars to work. I just wanted to remind the board that we did spend a lot of time talking about this. And while it is an ideal, it does function, and I think we all felt, at least from peer review perspective, that it's a safe and reasonable design from a parking layout standpoint.
Let's see, I guess I'm weighing whether or not we go forth into elevations, or if, you know, another option, guys, would be to loop back on the various points that Tim made and kind of get a bit of consensus if we can about, you know, whether we feel things are going to require revisions, or if we, you know, if there are things that we could condition. I'll give, sorry, please go ahead. Who is that? I'm not sure.
It's Derek, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, hi.
I just want to add to what I said, you know, I'm an architect by passion. I'm a designer, and I would really, really like to see something like this going on in Maynard, instead of an old building falling down in an empty parking lot, which would help incredible to the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, I mean, we could, in order, go through Tim's comments, and, you know, I was about to give an example. My example is the second, the second one about the juncture at the north where it's largely on town property. You know, on this one, I'd be more inclined to condition, you know, with some specific conditions, but it would, I think it does fall on the town to come up with a design response that is, you know, that picks up where the applicant leaves off. You know, I am concerned about the narrowness of that retaining wall at that point, but I'd say everything, to me, everything to the north of there needs to be studied, but not necessarily by this applicant. I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt if there was a solution proposed that made it work, but we're not seeing that. So that is an example of a concern that I think could be conditioned. And please jump in. I'll keep going. Number one, conflicts within the drawing set, to me, you know, needs to be resolved. You know, these are drawings that we're permitting, that are going into the town record. Somebody in a number of years needs to follow the discourse likely, and it's not a followable conversation if there are plans that are considered, you know, for permit that are unlabeled, that conflict with floor plans, et cetera. So I'm pretty resolved on this one in requiring that, you know, things be submitted to be consistent. You know, we can't have those types of miscoordination. I'll just keep going. The, number two, appropriateness of the design and context, this is a tough one because it really does, just to distill the points everyone was making, it's a broad calculation that we have to make, we, the board, that there are concessions and compromises, and on balance, the project has to, you know, add up to an approvable project in the aggregate with pros and cons. So, you know, I think that encompasses many of the different components that we're discussing, and so it's kind of an overarching problem for us. In specific, looking at the concerns of the promenade, which, you know, Tim has outlined under, so this is item two, appropriateness of design and context. Number three, he goes into some detail about aspects of the promenade that he has concerns with. I'll just go from the top. The pinch point, in my mind, falls into the category of trade-offs, right? Do, you know, are we willing to concede that land in order for the, you know, to enable the parking circulation of the project? And it's the linchpin. If that goes away, then there are a lot of other problems. So I'm, you know, trusting that the board can weigh that one together in sort of aggregate. The second one, the consistency of the street tree, or the tree planting, I mean, I would definitely like to see that regularized. I mean, at the very least, you know, I would have hoped to have the landscape architect available to comment on their design motivation, you know, whereas I felt that the design, the applicant response was ambiguous and didn't really support the kind of concept behind it. You know, whereas certainly the peer review comment about rhythmic consistency, and certainly, more importantly, the comments about visual screening of the parking, I think, make a lot of good sense in a counterargument. So that's something that's pretty simple that I'd like to see changed. You know, in general, the comment about the promenade and it being diminished by the assertive presence of the parking lot is a subjective statement, but, you know, I'd like to see more done to mitigate that. I'm not seeing that right now. So that's another item that I think I would ask to be changed. And finally, I fully agree that specs of design material and color for site furnishings need to be provided. That, to me, I mean, I suppose it could be conditioned, but like, then we're just doing... That, to me, I mean, I suppose it could be conditioned, but like, then we're just doing, we're just doing the same thing we're doing now in a month and a half from now. And I mean, I guess maybe at that point, there would have been kind of broad, you know, approval of the project. But, you know, I don't know, is it so hard? I mean, we just need some cut sheets and some images of what you're proposing. You know, we had, we had planned on having a dialogue about design review, not under the gun of, you know, needing to vote. So I, I think those things are reasonable to ask for in advance of a vote. So that, that's what I have to say about everything Tim has provided up to number two before we get into elevations. And if there's other comments from the board, please go ahead.
Yeah, if I could comment on your comments. What is, regards to materials, I think is actually very critical for the promenade, especially since we haven't determined who's responsible for maintaining it in the future. If the thing falls apart in a year, is the town on the hook? Does they own the easement? Or does the owner have to take care of it in perpetuity? Or is there some in-between? We just don't know that stuff yet. So I think materials is especially important if the town is on the hook for future repair. You had mentioned, you know, the pinch point is a compromise and compromise to get the parking. But I would reiterate, I think there's options to play with the parking. I would also point out that as drawn on the site plans on sheet C2, some of the parking stalls do not function. Cars would block each other in, they would be unusable simultaneously. So that needs to be looked at. And regarding the your thought about conditioning the connection between the promenade and the rail trail. I mean, I think that may be true, but right now, with almost zero information on design issues up in that area for not just that little walkway, but the whole length of the property line, I wouldn't be comfortable making that call just yet. I would have to see more information on the intentions along that area. And then, lastly, a big picture question of, you know, the promenade is a big civic element and integral to the project and the downtown. But I believe the owner is proposing that the promenade be in lieu of a payment requirement for recreation space. So I wonder if somehow we're double counting the fact that, you know, they're providing the promenade in order to avoid, you know, contributions to recreation open space, which are required for their additional dozen housing units. So I'm not sure it's entirely appropriate to consider the promenade as part of the quality of the project design. It seems like there's some double counting.
And also, just based on, off of what Bill said, you know, like, I'm thinking about the word compromise, which keeps getting used around the pinch point around the parking, right? Compromise usually means both sort of tensions give up a little bit. And in this case, it doesn't, that, you know, I feel like that word is not being used correctly. Because basically what happens here is the parking eats everything. And there is no give on the other direction, right? So like, there are a lot of things here that benefit from less parking. But there's a reluctance to do anything about it. And that's been consistent for the entire time we've had this project. Frankly, I feel like there's too much being granted, too small space to make it any good.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I have to research this. Looking, I believe in the question that Bill had regarding the double credit. I believe that is permitted, but I have to check. I gotta review that in the meantime. Just, I'm not positive on that one.
Thank you. Other comments from the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Has everybody on the board seen the renderings?
The, I believe I, I have, I believe I have. But we should get them up on the screen and make sure we're referring to the drawings that you are referring to. Mike, let's see if we can track these down. Under architecture, maybe?
It's under architecture.
Entrance high-res, front CBS high-res, yeah. Maybe. Mr. Valise, would you care to speak to the renderings?
Yes, this is the north side. I'm just going to wait for one picture. If you leave that picture with the flag, that's, that's the image that shows the relationship from the promenade to the town's property. And as you can see, that retaining wall is very small. But, you know, it will be wonderful if something can be worked with the town to make it unique. We, we had designed it like that because that's how we ended up on every meeting. And, you know, it's how we provide the water study to work. And, and as far as I remember, at the beginning of the project, the, this sidewalk or promenade was about five or six feet. Then we make it bigger put into all the meetings that you guys had in the past. I think, you know, if we look now, what is there now, this is a plus for Maynard.
Is it correct to say that the rendering that we're looking at in the lower left is not depicting the electric box and the utility pole that was discussed earlier?
Correct, the, the electric box, there's this space over there, is not shown for, so you can see it clearly. But that's not, it's on the other, this side of the, of the wall. So to be able to work with the town and we could, you know, move the utility poles, move the box and everything to make it work, it will be great in the future. I don't see that as a problem.
Okay, well, maybe this is a segue to get us into talking about the building.
So this is the view from, from the southeast side where CBS shows up and is trying to mimic the architecture of the mill with the front store on the front. This one shows the entrance to Main Street. You can see on the left, the bridge, the existing bridge and the existing lights are there, trying again to integrate, you know, the look of the mill type of building with some retail store. This is just a section of the retail store, you know, a very, very nice location for, for a business. And if we look on the other picture, the all the front of the building is retail store two.
Can you go back to that front one showing the entrance from Main Street? The other one, closer in, next to the river. Well, that view will work, that you have there with the flag, the one that just disappeared. There you go. So maybe Tim can comment on this, but that little single-level entrance thing that's part of the retail, it's, looks like it's just glass and metal and it's kind of like a sun porch. And it's just kind of different from the rest of the building. Is that okay?
I'm happy to comment. Are you looking at this view?
Uh, we're looking from the rear, but it's the same little box there.
The same image, like elevated, looking over the promenade with the
Flagpole dead center.
Yeah. That guy.
There you go, yep.
Yeah. So, Bill, your question, just comment on the appendage there?
Yeah, right, yeah, that's a good name for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a kind of, it's a sort of an exciting opportunity, but it's a very specific and kind of demanding opportunity that will be right for a small number of kinds of businesses and enterprises that might love it and wrong for many others that, you know, it's certainly great for, you know, it's all about display and direct access connectivity adjacency to, to the kinds of activities that we hope might occur on that promenade. You know, it's going to be a very specific offering in the real estate market. And, you know, architecturally, my feedback to the, on that with regard to the building is just that, in my opinion, it's a little undercooked. It's a little unresolved. It's, my advice to the applicant was that they consider making this particular appendage either more like the rest of the building or less like the rest of the building. Is that helpful, Bill?
It was until you got to the more or less part, but yeah, thanks.
Well, it's, which is to say, it's just kind of a, it's a sort of in-between that doesn't really assert itself. It doesn't have the courage of its convictions, it's just kind of there.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, your response.
No, all, all these are little details. This, what we're showing is an expensive way to show retail space. If you don't want, if you wanted to look a little more traditional with brick, it will be, you know, less expensive and less attractive to customers. But we will work with you on those little details, you know, for construction and finishing the product. I just, honestly, Mr. Chairman, I don't see that all this is a stop you for voting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Let's see. Mr. Chairman, may I just clarify one thing to kind of put this to bed, the earlier question? I believe regarding the valuation, the, the safe valuation of open space was the requirement that we're talking about in exchange for the additional units. The applicant has provided costs of the promenade, and those are, those, they're, their potential way forward would be to do the same thing that we did with 42, and that would be up to the board. But they're, they're saying that that, the costs involved with the construction of the promenade would be a wash or a greater value than the open space. And that's, that's, that's the, that's what the case is being made there, just for clarification. I'm not saying that, that the board, you know, that's going to be up to the board. I believe that is what we did on 42 summer. But that, just to clarify that, that was what the argument was. And that was, it was consistent with what was on 42 summer. So, just to clarify that, so
Go for that.
Okay, thank you.
Did I go over? I'm sorry.
Okay, I heard you.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, guys, just looking big picture here, we've, we've gone through design review comments on the site, the landscape, broad strokes of the project. I've outlined my concerns, we've heard other concerns specifically related to things that need to change. We're about to potentially launch into a discussion of elevations. But it's also 920. And I guess my inclination is that if the applicant is in good faith, willing to take the feedback and consider changes and resubmission, then I would be okay with going forth with the, with the review of the elevations, of the comments on the elevations. If that's not the case, then I don't really want to spend the time to do it, frankly. And I don't think we should take everyone's time to do that. So I'm just kind of checking in big picture with everyone here. Is it, is it worth going forward into this other part? I mean, granted that, you know, there's important information in there, it's, it does deserve to be heard by the public. So I'm a little hesitant to cut things short, but I also, just in interest of time, you know, do we need to go through this exercise? Is it going to result in a substantive response to our feedback?
So I think that's an incredibly apropos question, Greg, because I think there's an inherent tension between what Mr. Valise has said, we're willing to work on, although he has said small details, and the representation from Mr. McDonald who said, we're not going to make any changes. It's hard to know, you know, if Mr. Valise can kind of override that, or, you know, believe that it's the case. You know, so as you pointed out, Greg, you know, we have made a number of comments, and I think people have made a number of excellent comments. And maybe the right thing to do is to see if those are taken in good faith and then to, you know, really dig in and finish everything off, once we know that there is good faith.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
Yes, I do represent Development. And what I'm saying is that if you vote today, yes, work on all these little details to make it viable and work for the town of Maynard.
But isn't that the cart before the horse, which is like, yeah, well, after you vote to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, you, you guys need to vote, this has been so long already. Your client deserves a vote.
Okay, that answers my
It's the town of Maynard.
I think that answers a question for me. Other, other people on the board, how do you feel? I mean?
I'm happy to move the motion to vote, if that's what everybody else wants.
I'm, I'm also happy to, you know, if the applicant wants a vote and wants a yes vote, I can outline what a yes vote would look like for me. And this would include engineering sign-off, this would include empowering Tim to provide further and additional comments that are met. This would, this would allow maybe a condition for the chairman to add additional stipulations as part of discussion afterwards. But this would be, for a yes vote for me, would require empowering the town engineer, kicking some items to the CONCOM, and empowering Tim to provide additional back and forth until those items are resolved. And that's how I can get to a yes vote. But besides that, I can't get it to a yes vote unless we agree that other parties will be responsible for the conflicts that remain.
I'd like to add to that list also definitive drawings.
I agree, and that's part of what I meant by conflicts.
Yeah, I just wanted to be explicit. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
And very quickly, Bill or Tim, if you could jump in, because I believe there were aspects of the 42 Summer Street project that were treated in such a manner where details were continued to be negotiated and hashed out after the decision was made, I believe. And there was some process and dialogue to arrive at a sign-off. And maybe you could just comment quickly on, on that process if you think that could be fruitful in this scenario.
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but just to note that on 42, we also have issues where even after that process, the building was built in a way that was not congruent with drawings. And we're being asked retroactively to make judgments about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment based on your comment, which, which I don't disagree with the comment itself. The board could make sure that proactive inspections were conducted to assure that that doesn't occur. I don't think that, I think the same thing occurs with both Tim and my involvement. thing occurs with both Tim and my involvement on 42 during construction. I don't think we were as actively involved as maybe we should have been. But that certainly could be recognized with a condition.
I don't put the onus on you, Wayne.
No, no, maybe I didn't say that.
Build it according to the drawings, and then you unfortunately are being forced into a traffic composition, which is frankly unfair.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, on this case, with the conditions and the stipulation that there's going to be working with the design to bring it up to what the board expects, the big issue was, you know, it does involve the town consultants working with the applicant's consultants. And whether it's a condition after a vote, or it's a condition before a vote, it's still going to be a cost incurred. On the other hand, if, I don't know if Mr. Valles is, he's a professional, and I'm sure this sort of thing, he understands it a lot better than I would about, and perhaps it's something that could be worked out with minimal loss in translation, so to speak. I think that the board is apprehensive about what happens if something's done that is not what is approved, which is what happened with some parts of 42. Were they minor? Yes, I mean, maybe they, there would have been a better way to do it.
It's yet to be determined, isn't it?
We don't know if they're maybe they're minor yet.
No, no.
You're over speaking.
Yes, I am. But I don't want to, but let's not overcomplicate it either. The idea is that in this sort of thing, conditions can, we can condition it however we want for, you put whatever teeth in it you want for that. And now, we, you know, we have a reason to do that.
If I may, Bill, an answer to Greg's question. I think in principle, and in the abstract, the notion of conditioning things as we did with 42, it's not a bad principle. My sense is that with respect to Mr. Valles's characterization, that some of these things are especially small details. I'm not, in my opinion, and they're not quite that small, I think we need to see the drawings that actually represent the intent. I don't think conditions can be that very broad. I would just remind the board that the process of identifying the conditions, reviewing the conditions with the applicant last summer was contentious and difficult, was not a fluid constructive communication. And when the conditions were finally met, it was, it was months of work and months of fees later. Many of those changes, which came about as the work through the conditions, many of those changes did not manifest themselves in the construction, which is to say, they were disregarded. And what was built was, in a number of cases, specifically the items which the conditions were intended to address and improve. So, I don't think our differences are quite as tiny as Mr. Valles characterizes. And even if they were small, I've just cautioned that conditions does not simplify the process. It might offer the applicant the reassurance of an early yes, but it's a great likelihood of friction and hurdles to come. One factor that's new and could be, could be a difference maker is Mr. Valles's presence. I have not seen him represent the client in the past throughout this process. I don't have reason to doubt that he's the legitimate representative, but that's a kind of a, kind of a new thing. But, you know, if the balance of the dialogue where the applicant, with the applicant, where it happened through Mr. Valles, maybe the whole thing is far more constructive. Maybe it makes a difference.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I understand Tim's point. And the question, what's the best way to make this work? And the best way to make it work is to have the consultant, if Mr. Valles is working with the town input, and if he does represent the applicant, then it seems to me that's the best way to move it forward. I think this board has made it clear about that their apprehensions for certain things, and they're warranted. But it does seem like a way forward. Maybe, maybe, Mr. Chair, Mr. Valles, see what his, what his proposal is for input.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yes, I do represent them, and I will represent them. Major point here again, and sorry to be so stubborn, is we would like a vote. If you guys vote yes and do conditions, great. If you vote no, we appreciate your business. We just are asking you to vote on this project. It's way too much time.
If we wanted to consider a vote with conditions, wouldn't we have to spend some time developing those conditions? Now, we have suggestions on a partial thing, but several others have come up. And frankly, I wouldn't be comfortable voting on some verbally stated conditions tonight. I'd like to see them all on, in print and discussed by the board.
Well, typically. In detail.
Well, typically, the way that's been done is the board specifies the conditions that they want. And then there's a certain amount of things that are typically, you know, boilerplate type things that go on. But the meat of it is something that the board typically provides. And I did give you a draft, but I understand always had a chance to, you know, look at it right now. But Bill does make a good point that.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, haven't we done it, the board done this in the past, where you close the hearing, and we spend some time at a subsequent hearing, kind of going through those conditions, and everybody's given opportunity to read them and add to them in detail?
Yes.
Bill, isn't that right? Haven't we done that?
I believe.
Was it with the developer with the track record for disregarding conditions?
Yeah, Andrew, I'm not commenting one way or the other. I'm not saying.
Oh, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
The question is, I think the issue of that, the only thing is, new, new information cannot be introduced once the hearings closed.
Agreed. Yeah, I agree with that.
That kind of does tie our hands. I mean, if, in my opinion, from what I've seen today as, and what we've seen going on, this is something that I can't fathom why this couldn't be worked out offline, for the most part, brought back for, with everything addressed. I think that's, that's a very feasible approach, and I don't understand why it wouldn't work like that. There's direction, there's somebody working on the other end to respond to it. The board is clear where they're uncomfortable. And I think that it's entirely, it's reasonable for the board. I think it would be reasonable for the applicant. I think that there's, everybody's going to compromise a little bit, and this gives, the board's given quite a bit, and I think the applicant could give a little bit here with this to make this work. That's just my opinion. And, but, you know, it's, this has been a grind, and everybody's trying to get it to go. And that's the way I see forward.
And again, I don't want to put words in Bill's, Bill Memes's mouth, but we've spent a lot of time, the board's spent a lot of time on this project. I think all of the town officials here, I don't want to speak for them, but I'll say this, and they can please comment if they don't agree. You know, we've spent time doing what we think is best to represent this town. This is a blighted parcel that I think we would all love to see something better come out of. You know, is this, is the, is the system and the process we're proposing right now ideal? No, it's not, clearly. We would much rather have all the t's crossed and all the i's dotted. But we understand this project has some challenges. We understand, I'll be candid, we understand that the engineer has been a challenge to work with, and we hopefully would never have to do this again this way. But again, I know I say this from my heart, I'm trying to protect the town, I'm trying to make something happen here that I think is better than what's there. And I think there's a way to do that. It's not straightforward, it's not typical, but I think we can make it work.
So, I'm going to interrupt the discussion here and just say, we've gone, you know, for a while now and haven't heard from anyone else in the public. So, you know, folks out there who've been listening to the conversation, I think can appreciate that we are wrestling with a number of different things, considering what is appropriate to resolve, what is appropriate to condition and defer. So, I'm going to just open it up to the public attending the call. Please announce yourself, name and address, and please provide your comments. Thank you. Any comments? Okay, well, I guess that's that. So, going back to the board, then, you know, we, well, I'll just say my piece about the voting. I don't want to vote tonight. I don't think it's a responsible thing to do. I know it's what they're asking for. If it was a motion and seconded, then, you know, I don't, I'd have to ask for what my options were there. I'd really rather not vote on this right now, because I feel like, you know, I honestly find the applicant's response to my questioning about whether or not they'll make changes ambiguous, and I would rather give them some time to think about it with the public hearings still open. So, my inclination is to continue the hearing with, you know, the points that we've raised, having been raised. And, you know, you know, I will note for the record, though, so everyone knows that, you know, this architectural submission came in on April 14th. That was six weeks ago. And there's been, I, maybe I'm overstating, but I think a pretty significant breakdown in any behind-the-scenes communication between town staff and the applicant, and not making, you know, any comment as to why. But, you know, that's six weeks where a lot of this stuff could have been hashed out, revisions could have been made. I mean, you know, I just don't really have a lot of patience for complaints about the schedule, when there's been ample wasted time, you know, where there's plenty of opportunity to reach out, to try to hash these things out behind the scenes. So, you know, I don't know really where I, how I feel about whether or not the, you know, the applicant intends to respond. But I feel like we owe it, I owe it to the town to keep the hearing open for one more round, with our strong feelings having been heard, and give them the chance to respond.
Mr. Chairman, may I make several comments?
Yes, please, Jim.
Thank you. You know, during the last few years, the McDonald family has replaced at least three dilapidated buildings with new construction apartment buildings here in town. They purchased, rehabbed both interior and exterior and landscaped a number of older multifamily dwellings. The buildings are well-maintained and continually look attractive. And most importantly, they have been doing what we, the town, want. They are filling them with working people who walk around our downtown, eating at the restaurants, shopping in our small stores, going to the finance theater, and spending money here, not in some other town. We've now had numerous hearings and meetings over the project. McDonald's have been to blame sometimes for their insipid attention to detail and timings. But we have to shoulder some of the blame too. We've been less than, we've repeatedly gone over and over and over about some of our minor issues. But now, we have to decide whether we want to encourage the project for our downtown. The applicant wants us to make a decision tonight. Obviously, we aren't going to be able to make one. I, for one, think this will be an outstanding addition to Maynor. The promenade or riverwalk will tie Main Street to the rail trail. Thank you, Mr. Hesser, it was a good suggestion. And that will allow out-of-town folks using the trail access to our downtown area. We can't throw that away. We must continue to work towards it, and we must ask the McDonald family to give us a little bit more time and work with us diligently to get someplace. I think the McDonald family have been good neighbors and great supporters of our town. I would guess that next to Millamane, they might be one of the largest taxpayers we have. You know, if I were them, I wouldn't know whether I want to go forth with this project at all. The economy has driven us to our knees by the pandemic, and we don't know what's coming. Let's not signal them or any future applicants that we only want to throw blow blocks in their way. We want to work with them, and we don't encourage them and others that made it once and welcomes new investment in our town. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Jim. So, Jim, is it fair to say that you support a continuance?
At this stage of the game, yes. I don't see any way that we can possibly, or anybody's going to vote yes or no here. If anything, they might vote no. I don't think we dare lose this, and I implore the McDonald family to their representative here to give us just another little bit of time. Everybody works hard, and we try to get this thing done. I will leave the continuous time up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jim.
Hey, Greg, I agree with Jim. I just, I will use that same word, implore the McDonald Corporation and representatives of the town. We are close, and I would, I'm really close to voting yes on this. Let's, let's get this across the finish line. We can, we can all do this. This project is worth it to put in the hard effort of us just swallowing another two weeks or whatever it takes to resolve these conflicts and get it done. We all need this, we can do it.
Thank you. Other comments?
And Greg.
Yes, please.
I think, you know, even if we wanted to vote, it's not just a single vote. Don't we have like multiple votes on all the criteria and all the permits and stuff?
Yeah, it's.
It's a lot of them.
This is, this is 45 minutes of voting, so.
No, well, no.
Thirty-five, maybe.
I have it condensed.
Plenty. Okay. Well, I don't know. Let's see, Mr. Valles, any final comments? I think, hearing nothing further from the board, I think that seems to be the general consensus of things. We would then, we would then need to identify a date to which we continue to.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
Please off the record. I'm the chairman of a planning board too, so I know what you're struggling to. I'm going to go back into record. We wanted a vote tonight because the client deserves it. The planning board did not deliver. And I'm in charge of this. I represent, you are on the face of this project. If you continue this, I will come back for a vote with conditions. I don't want to go around anymore with this, this, and that. You guys have to do your work and vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. For the record, I think it's our discretion as to when we vote. So, I, you know, the assertion that the applicant deserves a vote is inaccurate, in my opinion. So, I just want to make that clear for everybody out there, that, you know, we vote when we're ready to vote, we're not ready to vote. So, we're going to continue. And looking at the calendar, I see June 9th, don't see that as possible. June 23rd now is not a meeting. We have July 14th and July 28th. Mr. Valles, you have an understanding of the magnitude of the changes that we are asking for, and I ask you to. And I ask you to advise us whether you think the July 14th or July 28th dates are going to work for you.
Mr. Chairman, you have a legit project in front of your hands. We want a vote.
We're not voting. What, what date would you like us to continue to, please?
Could I ask if the applicant wishes to withdraw the project?
Sure.
Want to withdraw the project?
I want a vote.
Well, I'm not voting tonight and I heard from others that we're not voting, so it's not an option. We're going to continue or withdraw, I guess, is, are the two options. So I'm putting out two dates, July 14th or July 28th. And I'm asking you to provide us with the date at which you can, you and your client can get an appropriate response together in, in documents.
Are you going to vote?
Is this a stone wall? I mean, come on.
This is, this is not the path that we're going down. We're not going down this path, Mr. Valles.
I, I'm tired, I'm ready to, to call it a night, okay? I think a lot of us are.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Seriously, man, I mean, if you know the ropes, come on, you know that, you know, we vote when we.
I know the rules.
We're not ready, all right? These are our rules and we're doing it this way. I'm sorry, we're not voting.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I make a motion that we continue this to the first meeting in July?
I second the motion.
July 14th. All in favor, by voice vote. Hi. Guys, you've got, you, you have a good handle on what we want. Either respond or don't, okay? I mean.
Are you guys going to vote on that day?
I'm sorry, we're continued. Do we have anything else on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor. Guys, thank you for your patience and we'll talk to you soon. Have a good night.
Good night now.